Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of November 3rd, 2022. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It has been duly advertised, according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2022 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk posts on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the township's civic clerk website, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Hasstag, and Mr. Minimondo for asking Mr. Peazin.
Present.
Mr. Sanerita.
Here.
Mr. Scovall.
Here.
Mr. Chicorelli.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mayor LaPani.
Here.
Vice Chair Julian.
Here.
Chair Saraji.
Here.
Mr. Coys.
Present.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Hay.
Present.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. I was going to ask the board if we can go a little bit out of order this evening, because I know there has been a change with one of the applications this evening. So I was looking to see if we could start off with the application portion.
The only thing, Mr. Chair, I just have some business that I need to bring out tonight. It was the Environmental Commission meeting from the other night, so I felt it was important to talk about it for a couple of minutes before we get started. To say we had a lively meeting the other night was an understatement. It was a very precarious meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt, Mr. Julian, why don't we at least put the application designation on the record so we don't worry? I think we all know what we're talking about. I assume we're talking about tonight's application.
If it was the same as that the other night, yeah, but I'll just talk about the events and what we can kind of do to put things in place so that we don't have a similar situation. And I think it's important to talk about. But whatever order you want to go in, as long as we talk about it, I want to talk about it.
Why don't we at least read the designation, then Neil can talk, and then you can bring Michael up.
Okay. So I'm assuming we are going to be talking about Homestead 279 LLC with a file number of 22-PB-05-S/MSPV with a time of decision of, I'm not sure if this is a correct time of decision on listed here, September 21st. I thought we were to the end of the year. Yes. Okay. It's just a typo here. Okay. Okay, Mr. Grodnik.
Chairman, I'm recused from this application, but I'm curious, Mr. Julian, if the issues are specific or general to the meeting?
General. They're general. They're not specific to the application, although, you know, there was an incident that, you know, needs to be talked about that happened to the applicant, that, you know, somebody approached me after the meeting, you know, that's something that needs to be put out there also, because that's the generalization of the conduct of the meeting is what I want to talk about.
As it relates to the conduct of the overall meeting in general, Mr. Chicorelli can remain, when he starts talking about the specifics of the application, he's going to have to refuse himself, go in the back room and come back after the application is over.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Grodnik. I'm an attorney at Savo Shawk Law Firm in Somerville on behalf of the applicant. We're here tonight seeking an adjournment of the application based upon the unavailability of our planner, John McDonough, who is on his feet in another application tonight and was compelled to testify for additional cross-examination in that town. So I had COVID for the first appearance on this hearing in September. I did review the recorded hearing in its entirety twice, and again this afternoon. And so I wanted to kind of take this in two steps. I wanted to first just request the adjournment. I know maybe we can't get a firm date, but we'll certainly agree to a reasonable extension of time, time of decision, based upon the calendar, which I know is very full. So that's my first request, just the adjournment. And then I'd like to talk about some other substantive issues.
Okay. All right. I know we can't firmly schedule a date.
Well, I think we carry this until the reorganization meeting, and I believe you're coming anyway that night to somebody else, is that my recollection?
Yeah, I'm here every month.
I know that feeling. And then at that point, assuming the board adopts the right reorganization, which will include the meeting agenda for next year, I'm assuming Mr. Coys's office, my office, et cetera, will at least try, and we'll have everybody with calendars, and we'll deal with it. So I think the issue is to carry till at least the meeting of January 12th.
12th.
The second, not the reorg meeting, but the regular meeting of the 12th. And at that point, the parties will then establish a new date for that.
So just for the benefit of the public, there wouldn't be any type of testimony being provided that night?
No, they probably should be here just to...
Just to hear the date.
Just to hear whatever has to be said.
Okay. And extension time of decision?
Right now, it's December 31st.
Right.
So in terms of what?
I mean, let's intermally go to January 31st. If we need another extension, we can certainly accommodate.
This would be without further notice at this time.
31st.
To the January 12th meeting, 2023, time of decision will extension to 1/31/23. And with the understanding of all parties, this matter will not get heard on the 12th, but at least we can potentially establish a date.
Right. And for the record, we did sign that, and it's memorialized.
Thank you.
The second issue is, you know, I listened to the hearing today.
Do we need to take a vote for that?
Yeah, I guess we need to take a vote. Sorry.
So with what Mr. Bernstein just proposed, with the continuation till the 12th of next year, at which time we'll establish a calendar date and a time of decision extended to the end of January of next year, so I have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peazin.
Yes.
Come on, did you move it? Did I hear you say something?
No. No, I said...
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Minimondo for... Sorry, you're not here. Mayor LaPani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraji?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that courtesy. So at the end of the last meeting, Mr. Bernstein requested that Mr. McDonough draft a planning memorandum addressing the relief necessary. And, you know, much of the discussion was specifically related to the subdivision. And I just wanted to kind of flush out some legal issues with respect to that variance. So the board had indicated that they wanted to hear testimony regarding the hardship for just specifically that lot not abutting a street variance. And the statute reads, you know, 4055-D35 says that, you know, no structure should be built unless it abuts a street, giving access to such proposed building or structure. And then, of course, there's a remedy for that in subsection 36. And it states that under 35, when enforcement of 55-D35 would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, or where the circumstances of the case do not require the building or structure be related to the street. So the statute actually provides two different remedies for relief from that section. And while I agree that planning testimony would certainly be helpful and meaningful for the idea of practical difficulty and unnecessary hardship, my position is that the board needs to hear the entire case before voting because of the second section of subsection D35 and 36, where it says, "The circumstances of the case do not require the building or structure to be related to a street." And there was an exchange between my colleague, Mr. Fisher, and Mr. Maskey about whether there is a variance. And, you know, I took a little bit of a deep dive into that issue, and there's actually a recent opinion, the cases Lakewood Realty Associates versus Zoning Board of Adjustment of Lakewood. And this is a very interesting ruling by Judge Ford about, you know, I would say historically, most people interpreted the statute to mean having a property, a public street. But I'm just going to read a portion of the decision. "We agree with Judge Ford's reasoning that even though the property does not front on Route 70, in this case, a public roadway, no variance was required for the property's driveway access because, quote, 'the means of access by the driveway was subject to a previous approval.' The judge pointed out that under 55-D7, which is at the definition section of the MLUL, quote, 'provides multiple definitions of a street, one of which being any street, avenue, boulevard, roadway, parkway, viaduct, drive, or other way, which was approved by a municipal action as provided by the MLUL.'" In this case, Striker at the Hennacles was subject to several applications, I believe, in the 90s, and there was a wide lane that was constructed, or drive that was constructed to access the rear portion of the lot, clearly in anticipation of future development. So I have copies of the case from Mr. Bernstein and Mr. Coys to take a look at that and to consider whether there is a variance for a lot abut it, not abutting a street. My other argument is that, you know, respectfully, I don't think it's proper for the board to act on the application without hearing the application. And just listening to the testimony last week and the questions from the professionals, it sounded like you wanted Mr. McDonough and perhaps the applicant or the owner to testify as to the issue of the hardship. And there's a series of cases that look at due process and the right to a hearing. And, you know, my argument is essentially, it's impossible to look at the variances, look at the relief needed, because remember, what's required to grant the variance, again, is the hardship or whether the lot is appropriate for it. But then the focus is on, quote, "conditions that will provide adequate access for firefighting equipment, ambulances, or other emergency vehicles necessary for the protection of health and safety." And I believe that testimony would be required not only for the site plan itself to discuss those issues, as well as from the architect, it's a sprinklered building, there's fire lanes, et cetera, as well as from our traffic engineer that has so far adequately demonstrated to Chris that there is sufficient access. So we would ask that the board vote not in an interim basis. And I guess the question is whether a board can compel essentially bifurcating an application as a subdivision only and not get despite the site plan, or whether the board is required to hear the entire application before voting. So we would just ask that, you know, we don't do this piecemeal where we just talk about the subdivision if, in fact, a variance is required, rather that all of the testimony be put on the record before the court, or before the board votes on either the subdivision or the site plan. My problem with this is, you know, let's assume that the board denies the subdivision, then we have to go to court, and then the court's going to remand, and then they're going to remand potentially for site plan. So we would just ask that, just like any other application, that we present our testimony from, you know, we don't have tons of testimony from traffic and architecture, but that we be permitted to proceed in a regular course with respect to having planning kind of wrap a bow around all the testimony, all the site plan testimony and other professional testimony. So that would be our request, as well as maybe an opinion before next hearing whether or not a variance does, whether this application does necessitate a variance. We don't mind testifying as to just the lot not abutting a street variance, but we would just ask that the board wait to hear all the testimony before making a vote on the entire application, rather than, you know, compelling the vote, which I would think would be premature, which wouldn't allow us to provide the necessary proofs for the record, which is, again, my job is to make a record. And so I guess that's for Mr. Bernstein's discussion. I do have the cases. So just to wrap that up, I'm quoting a couple of cases with respect to the obligation of the board to hear the full application before rendering a decision. There's a case called Centennial Land v. Medford, quoting, "While these matters are not the courts', when deciding matters properly before them, they must hear testimony, take exhibits, make finding of facts, and draw legal conclusion from the facts, as produced by the evidence presented at a hearing in much way the courts do. Of course, the independence of the board does not allow it to rewrite the ordinance or ignoring its provisions, or believe any court could rewrite a statute." Another learned treatise is Cox, the Cox Manual. It says, "After the hearing, quote, 'When all parties have presented all their evidence and testimony, and the members of the board have asked all the questions they desire, the board is then required to make a decision based upon the evidence presented.'" And my last case is Geiger v. Levco, which states that a planning board acts in a quasi-judicial capacity. Its commissions are bound in good conscience to consider all the evidence and be guided by the evidence alone. They must reach conclusions uninfluenced by extraneous consideration. The applicant for the site plan approval and the objectors are entitled to a fair hearing consistent with the fundamental standards of due process." That's quoting Geiger v. Levco, Route 46 Associates, NJ Super 278, a 1981 case. So that's all I have. You know, I don't mind, again, I don't mind presenting planning testimony, but I don't know how the board could deny an application without hearing from our traffic engineer, who's going to testify as to adequate access from our architect, that obviously has a tremendous amount of fire protection, as well as, you know, ultimately the planner to justify all the relief that we're requesting. As well as the variance itself under 4055-D35 and D36, I would submit that the applicant doesn't need to show practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship if they can, where it says, "Or where the circumstances of the case do not require the building or structure to be related to a street." The township ordinance defines a street "consistent with an MLUL," which it's under subsection 188.3, "Any street, avenue, boulevard, road, parkway, viaduct, drive, or other way, which is an existing state, county, or municipal roadway, or which is shown upon a plat heretofore approved pursuant to her law, or which was approved by official action," which is what Judge Ford relied upon in his conclusion in the case that we cited, that it's not a variance because it doesn't have to be a public street. It has to be, you know, essentially something that has been operating, or, you know, it's not a driveway, it's incredibly wide. If you even look on GIS or Google Maps, it's charted as what a street would look like. So I just wanted to flag that issue and ask the board to render an opinion on that issue prior to our hearing so we can prepare our testimony accordingly. Thank you. And Mr. Torriello, I understand, would like to put something on the record.
Yeah, I would like a certain length copy of the Lakewood case that you referenced.
You need to speak on the microphone.
Yeah. All right.
Good evening, Joseph Torriello. Yeah, I would like a copy of the Lakewood case that, I don't think this is on.
It's on.
All right. You can hear me, right? Something you can hear.
As long as guests can hear.
Okay. So I would like a copy of that case. And with respect to the cases that Mr. O'Grodnik read into the record, all it says is to hear all the evidence. It didn't say as to the entirety of the case. Cases are bifurcated all the time, and to the extent that the board determines that a subdivision is not appropriate, it literally moots the rest of the application. I cannot think of a more inefficient way of handling a case than to hear evidence that may not become relevant if the applicant cannot satisfy its burden with respect to the subdivision. And Mr. O'Grodnik citing section D36, this is a distribution center that is being proposed. So to state to the board that there's no correlation between a distribution center and a street, I would definitely want the opportunity to brief that issue. And I'm confident that I will be able to suggest to the board that streets and distribution centers are integrally related. So, thank you.
Okay.
I'm not saying anything for the right...
You can wait till next year.
I'm going to wait till the appropriate time at the appropriate place.
So we'll have a decision, I'm imagining, for you, Mr. Grodnik, before the...
We will have something for Mr. O'Grodnik, for the board, for Mr. Torriello, and everybody else in advance of when this application is actually heard.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Julian.
Mr. Julian.
Well, there was a question about public comment, but there's, so essentially the...
Mic and phone, please.
So you can make public comment on things that are not on the agenda. So this application, if I'm wrong, was on the agenda, so there wouldn't be public comment regarding that application anyway, but you can make in general comment about anything if you'd like to, when that part is up, when we start over again in the order.
All right. Just no shadow from the floor. There is no public comment on the application because the application's not being heard tonight. So I think it's, you know, the attorneys are not the witnesses.
As I think the mayor indicated, there can be public comment on a general nature when we get the public comment, which we will at some point later this evening.
All right. Mr. Julian.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to talk about the Environmental Commission meeting the other night. I definitely have some concerns that I want to throw out there. My instincts are telling me, you know, to bring this up now. We were in a situation where we were inundated with a lot of people. The room was undersized, it was overcrowded, it was emotional, it was frustrating, and we kind of just didn't know what to do. So I'm just asking for support, for, you know, commissions to kind of know what to do in situations that potentially might be volatile. We, you know, we didn't know how to get a hold of a fire marshal, we didn't know how to get a hold of police, we almost shut down the meeting a few times. Like I said, it was not a good night. And it was, like I said, it was very precarious. So I think before, you know, this is like the new normal, especially with...
I'm just going to pause just there. I don't expect it to be a new normal.
Well...
And I'm actually outraged that the public would be behaving that way.
Well...
You know, we're not looking to make YouTube videos here, okay?
The thing is...
So, but I do hear what you're saying.
You know, it's not only the public. I mean, the thing is to, we have to, the board has to have the ability to, and the mechanisms in place to be able to react to a crowd that's just going to oversize the room. Either we shut down the meeting, but we don't know, we couldn't get a hold of the right people. And Debbie and I have been on these boards and chaired them, we just didn't know what to do. I don't want to be or put any of the committees in those situations. I want to have somebody kind of go over the protocol and say, like, if, you know, you feel like there's too many people in this room, we're not having this meeting. You know, I guess we had the authority to do that, but we just kind of pushed through it. And again, it's, these warehouse meetings are very, you know, very emotional, social media gets ramped up before the meetings, people come in, they're ready to, you know, shoot flames. And there's not, you know, it's not like here where we have, you know, a podium, we just had a table and a lot of people. And people were just getting up, and they were just, you know, not really asking questions of the applicant, but they were kind of making speeches, and we did the best we could. And, you know, Debbie and I tried to turn down the heat a little to make everybody feel okay, but I don't want these commissions and these volunteers to be put in a situation that something might happen.
Yeah.
And like I said, it's, these are the situations these days, I, you know, I questioned myself, should I, shouldn't I say something? But I said, "It's better to say something now than maybe put something in place for the next time that I don't want to feel like..." And also, somebody from the applicant came up to me after the meeting and said they felt threatened, and that's just not good. And somebody actually threatened them, you know, and that's not, that's not the way we should conduct our business here. So if we need police presence there or a fire marshal, I just, you know, we've been on these commissions a long time, it has never been this volatile.
No, and you have every right to, you know, you have every right to bring it up. I wasn't aware of it, and again, frankly, I'm embarrassed that this happened because this is Hillsborough, not supposed to be happening here. So, but by all means, you know, this is how things get restricted, and public access can start to, you know, be allocated when nonsense goes on like this, but...
I think it's good to include the public, but, you know, you can't fit 100 people in that room. You know, we maybe open the room and make it bigger, or put us up on a podium, or, I don't know. I, you know, I don't have the answer, but I do, I did want to bring this subject up because for the first time in a long time, I did not have a good feeling. I left there the other night.
And, you know, I mean, I'll let the mayor address because he's administration, but I think fortunately, you know, there'll be a police presence coming.
First of all, the people in the Environmental Commission are volunteers. There are people that live in this town who are giving their time freely to help an application. It is a purely advisory panel that has no way of voting for or against the application. They advise us, the planning board. So to take your ire out on five people who are sitting there just trying to do a job, you should all be ashamed of yourselves, whoever you are, completely ashamed of yourselves. And I wish I was there to see it, because then I would say every one of their names This is not the way it's supposed to be done. You have a question, a concern, you come up and you, as an adult, deliver it. Not an emotional soliloquy that is haphazard or random to a bunch of people just trying to do a job. What would your kids think if they saw you doing that? Or if you saw your kids doing that? I would hope that you would say it's not the right thing to do. And if you do think it's the right thing to do, then I'm ashamed of you. If we have to limit the number of people in a room to 10, I will, to keep decorum in a meeting and keep my volunteers safe. So don't think I won't. So it's up to you, when you go to a meeting, to sit there and behave and present yourself in the way it should be done. There's no reason for him to come up and say they were afraid to do their job. So I'm going to leave it with you to see how you act, not necessarily you people in the audience, whoever's listening out there. Because I will not tolerate it, and I don't think... Because I will not tolerate it and I don't think my associate over here to the left is going to tolerate it or if he has something else to say. But the buck stops with me right now and it's not going to be tolerated. So we will look into this before the next meeting. And if we have to set a limit for the number of people, we will. And if I have to have a policeman there sitting there, it becomes obnoxious or dangerous to shut the meeting down, we will. I'll leave it with that.
Mayor, I couldn't agree more. And Neil, I appreciate you saying that. I know that wasn't the easiest thing in the world to say.
Because I mean, I've been around a long time and I don't, I don't cry, I don't want to cry wolf, but I just did not get a good feeling.
I think we really try to allow for as much comment as possible from people. We have these meetings in public and we're required to, but there has to be a certain level of expectation on how those meetings are going to be conducted. And as noted, not just the Environmental Commission, the people sitting up here on this dais are volunteers as well. Yeah, we've had people say that, you know, we, we, we don't love our town. We're destroying, it's disgraceful. But the, the fact that people might feel threatened, where are we? Are you, are you serious? If, we will have protection there. And for those of you that think you can get out of line in those types of circumstances, we will make sure that's dealt with because we will never put one of our volunteers in a position again where they feel threatened.
That's right. We're going to get back to business. Okay. Next up.
Let the record reflect two items. One, Mr. Delkor arrived at 7:48 and Mr. Chicorelli is back on the dais. Since the issue of the question regarding your recusal is not before the board at this time.
So can you repeat that last word?
Your recusal is no longer before the board at this moment in terms of your taking an action, so.
Okay.
Back to regular order of business, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm just going to go to the next application here. 1170 Millstone LLC, Redcom file 22-PB-09-MSPV with the time of decision of February 28th of next year. The applicant had rescheduled to the December 1st meeting of this year or to the agenda, but has now requested an adjournment to a 2023 agenda date that will be determined in a similar manner as with the homestead application. So with that, do I need to take a roll call?
Your motion to continue the, reschedule the application to the January 12th regular meeting, at which time another date will be established for a hearing and Mr. Chicorelli is excused from a vote on this matter.
Okay, second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beazin?
Yes.
Mr. Senator Amida?
Yes.
Scobbo?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committee member Delkor?
Yes.
Mary Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraji?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're going to go back to the top of the order of the agenda. First up, we have consideration of meeting minutes. We have the September 22nd, 2022 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members of the mayor, Mr. Delkor, yourself, Mr. Julian, Mr. Scobbo, Mr. Chicorelli and Ms. Smith.
May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Any comments from the dais? Okay, hearing done, roll call, please.
Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committee member Delkor?
Yes.
Mary Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraji?
Yes.
Okay, we have a consideration of resolutions. Actually, it's a revision of a resolution. An application number of 98-PB-24MR. Peter and Elizabeth Trinchenko.
Mr. Chairman, this matter has been placed on the agenda at the request of the county regarding the removal of a condition of an old application regarding a regulation on the term of any future development of the site. That condition is being proposed to be removed with the subject condition that any development on the site has to come back to this board for future action.
May I have a motion to make that revision?
Second.
Call, any comments from the dais? Okay. Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Beazin?
Yes.
Mr. Senator Amida?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committee member Delkor?
Yes.
Mary Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraji?
Yes.
Okay, we do not have any planning board business nor any consideration of ordinances. So this will be the point we'll open up from business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. If you'd like to place any commentary on the record, for matters not on the agenda, please feel free to come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Don't all rush up at once.
You gotta take the warm-up lap. That's the new protocol, it's a warm-up lap.
If I may, I want to use a better mic.
You used a hand mic in there?
Thank you.
David Brooke. Working, okay.
Just got to keep it close to the mouth, that's all.
Seven winding way. It's interesting that Mr. Julian mentioned a number of things. I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know. But it's also, to me, important to talk about, I'd like to.
You got to keep the mic close to your mouth. You can't drift.
I'm sorry.
Otherwise, the people in the back can't hear you and they'll start yelling at me.
Look, to me, there's two things that I just want to mention. One, it's all about perception. And I'm talking about here. The chairman has on more than one occasions identified that the planning board operates as a quasi-judicial body. And just to clarify, at least from my point of view, quasi-judicial means that this proceeding is more formal, almost like a trial. There's a sonographer and the board sort of acts like a court. The applicant presents its case in the form of facts with professionals in a way that each witness proves that the application complies with the requirements in the ordinances. The township professional staff, the planner, the engineer, the attorney, each advise the board as to their interpretations and analysis of the applicant's information and testimony. As residents, we assist in the fact finding, or like to think we do, since if the applicant is not in conformance with the requirements of the ordinance, then this board would and should act to deny the application. As you probably all know, I've been at almost all the recent planning board meetings involving the many applications for warehouses and some others. I've observed that our township engineer speaks in a way that I've started to wonder if the engineer is advising the township or the applicant. I hear the township engineer sometimes making excuses for the applicant and providing explanations for how the applicant can be compliant. My belief is that I'm paying for the township engineer and he is my advocate only. He's the township's advocate, making sure that the applicants are doing what is required. I've heard things that make me wonder. The applicant, the applicant hires professionals who are supposed to know this stuff. And if they don't, well, you know what? That's their problem, not ours. I know, or I should say, we know, the burden's on the applicant to prove its case and not have our engineer help them prove it. To me, this is too cozy of a relationship and it has the potential to taint the process. I'm not suggesting that everyone should not be cordial and professional. It's just odd, kind of like having the prosecutor in a case give advice to the defendant on how he can beat the rap. To me, I think that quasi-judicial dictates that the applicant make its own case and not the township making it for them. I observe that what I have said applies to all township staff as well as other professionals hired by the township. And I also help, like to think that that's the case. Look, I want their support and not to be left wondering whose side are they on. And again, to me, it's all about perception. One other thing, and Mr. Julian mentioned this at the meeting, at the Environmental Commission meeting about feeling threatened. I also noticed that I'm going to classify, or what I'd like to classify as a lack of civility in these meetings, often addressed to the public. Of course, we know that's never happened to me. But I want to make one suggestion for everyone. That includes the board, the staff, the applicants and the public. We need proceedings that respect each person's opinions and ideas. We may not agree on everything. I know we don't, but at least we can be civil and respectful. One more thing, we, the public, we're not the enemy. We're your friends and your neighbors. And I think we can all agree that we want the same thing. That is a community that's safe and that we enjoy living in, one that keeps some green spaces between us, is developed in a way that respects all of us and ultimately provides us with a place that we want to call home, that we want to call home, and has more than a ShopRite or Lowe's. I'm not knocking them, but I want more than ShopRite and Lowe's. Right with a cohesive town center that welcomes us all and makes us feel proud to live here. Please, let's work together and try to be nice and make every effort to do the right thing on every decision, which I know you do, but not just legally. But what is best for all of us, since while we welcome the good decisions, we all have to live with the bad ones. Thanks for your time.
Don't applaud that. Sorry. If I may, sorry. Mr. Brooke, just a couple of things I would comment on in what you just said. The, our engineer, yes, is paid by us and works for us as our advocate to make sure that the applicant is doing, you don't need to, we're not having a debate, so I'm just going to comment. He's our, he's the township's engineer. His job is to make sure the applicant is, is doing the engineering tasks in compliance with the law, something that protects the ordinances and regulations that we have in town and make sure that any development is done the right way. He's not the enemy of the applicant and the applicants are not the township's enemies either. There are always opportunities for planning that make sense. And just because there are applications that some residents don't want or that we think aren't appropriate for town, that doesn't mean we should be treating the applicants in a way that is counter to spark and important planning aspects. So we should not be antagonistic to them. And in many cases, it makes ultimate sense for our engineer to work with the applicant's engineer to get to the right resolution. That's not always the case. Sometimes they're going to be adversarial, but to think that they're always going to be is simply not the way the process works.
And just for the record.
If you want to comment.
I didn't, I didn't say that I felt threatened, but I said somebody from the applicant, one of the professionals from the applicant came up to me afterwards and said that they felt threatened. So that's not good. But I did, I did comment about the demeanor and the tone of these meetings that, you know, in this type of environment, it's the type of thing that we all have to kind of be cautious enough to kind of go along with what you're saying is, you know, doing it in a professional way. And that, that's my point, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean that. Good job.
No, no problem, committee man. Chairman, it's okay if me.
Please.
First of all, I want to make sure I dispel any, you know, I want to say, maybe reservations that the public may have that, and I want to protect my firm because I worked for a very large firm, worked there nearly 18 years. We have no relationship with this applicant. It's number one. Number two, yeah, I mean, my role here is to educate not just the applicant. Unfortunately, I find myself over the last 30 years educating the applicants more than educating most, but it's also to educate the board and educate the public. The public is not always going to necessarily agree with me. But considering I've had standing myself in other municipalities, one of which I'm about to go on 18 years with, and it's very difficult for a consultant to be on a municipality for 18 years as their township engineer, as their planning board engineer, as their zoning board engineer, you know, my record speaks for itself and my firm's record does as well. So the way I look at it is, my role is to educate. And unfortunately, you know, in that particular sense, that particular application, it's unfortunate, but I'm dealing with an applicant that really has to go ahead and provide those results to convince you as the board. It doesn't necessarily convince the public, but it should convince the public because the public does have a right to know and so does the board have a right to know. And at the end of the day, I try to educate and that's really my role here, as well as advise. The applicant is coming in and it is an application by right to the planning board. But they do need to put the necessary proofs on. And if I don't feel like they're doing that, I'm going to make sure I call it out as I did with that applicant, as I've already shown many other applicants. So, you know, I, defending myself, it's not a big deal to do, but I want to make sure the public understands that a lot of the applicants coming before us, I've noticed unfortunately in general observations, they need to be educated because they are not bringing a lot of the things that they should be bringing, you know, to light that are extremely important to the environment of the community.
Thank you.
Brian Tarantino, 235 Fairfield Lane. Just to weigh in on a couple of those.
Is this mic okay?
Yep.
All right. Just to weigh in on a couple of those things. I mean, I think that, Mr. Hay, I think that, you know, I don't think we're saying that you're partial. I think it's really just a matter of appearance, you know? And I think that's what's really important. And I think, Chairman, you know, you said it a couple of times at the Harvard Way meeting. You said to the applicant, he is not your, he is not your consultant. And so, and I appreciated that. You know, you really emphasized that. And so, to me, that was an example of how sometimes the boundaries can be a little bit blurred. And so, if the applicant is really not prepared, I think that it's up to them to be prepared and to hire the right people to be prepared. And that's what we would hope. But, but sure, no, I appreciate, you know, the professionalism and, you know, the impartiality. It's, it's really about the appearance, right? And then just one more comment. I wasn't at the environmental committee meeting, so I don't know exactly what happened. But certainly, it seems like important, if there is a widespread interest in an application, that perhaps a larger room would be appropriate. And that might have, I don't know. But that certainly would have solved at least one of the problems and it would maintain the kind of access. I mean, you guys were suggesting, maybe we'll limit the access, but I actually think that that would be unfortunate and counterproductive. And so, what I would urge you to do is, it's just a matter of, maybe that we could have the environmental committee meeting in this room or some other, you know, some other large room. Just a suggestion.
Whoever gets to the mic first gets it next.
No tackle.
That's right.
Just a few words on that topic. Nick Gregas, 71 Licker Avenue. I was at that meeting. And what you say was partially true, but the people. I was at that meeting, and what you say was partially true, but the people that came, many of us live alone, lost our spouse, our development dias from 65 to 90-year-old people, they felt threatened. They, they thought they're going to lose their house. They're going to live, their dream was never to live next to a warehouse. They didn't understand the rules, obviously. So, for example, not to belabor this, but for example, one of our 86-year-old widow, she rose slowly, definitely she had some health issues. She asked, I'm attorney because it's environmental, what she should do when her property values decrease, and the attorney said, "Well, you need to go down to the courthouse and file tax reduction with the township." Okay? What kind of answer is that for an 86-year-old? Didn't offer to do it pro bono, just said, "This is what you need to do when your property values decrease. You need to get a break on your taxes." You know, it took everything I had not to stand up, to, you know, to scream and yell. But many of us tried to calm the crowd down. We put out a letter to our community stressing the rules, what would not be tolerated by us as a community for the next meeting. So we did take action. Joyce can speak more to what we sent out to all our residents, and I'm here to apologize for the masses, and that won't happen again, I assure you.
No, and I understand, sir. I mean, we were there, we feel the emotion, we want to, you know, work with the public, and I said that there. I just want to avoid something that potentially might happen, and that's all I'm saying. And, you know, that's, that's why, and, you know, Deputy Mayor said it too, like, I really didn't want to bring it up, but I felt it was like my obligation to say something because I just want to.
Their dreams are never, never to retire and live next to a warehouse. I assure you that.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, the next person gets up. I think for the record, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Julian, the only attorney, so that no one confuses the issue, who was there that night was Mr. O'Grady.
Yes, Mr. O'Grady was, as far as I know, the only attorney.
Just to be clear, he means there was no township representative there. So that didn't come from a township attorney.
Or any other attorney affiliated with the township in any way, so thank you.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also Hillsborough Township property owner, block 86, lot 32155, Camplain Road. I was present at the public hearing of the application of M&amp;M Realty Partners LLC regarding the former Glengarry Quarry, which was conducted during the September 22, 2022 Planning Board meeting. I had asked why the settlement agreement wasn't included with the records and the documents that are made available to the public regarding the application that's provided on civil clerk. I was told that the settlement agreement is separate from the application. Excuse me. However, during the public hearing, the applicant's attorney, Douglas Wolfson, brought up the settlement agreement, and he was quite agitated that the board was not adhering to the settlement agreement. This is reported in the verbatim transcript of the September 22 Planning Board meeting, and it's also in the, in the, the settlement agreement is also, was also brought up during the July 28, 22 Planning Board meeting. I obtained copies through a request for government records through the Open Public Records Act for a verbatim transcript of the two Planning Board meetings regarding M&amp;M and also for the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement is very germane to the application, and it's obvious when the discussion was during the, during the public hearing. So why isn't that considered part of the application? Because basically, the settlement agreement obligates the planning board. Now, also during the Hillsborough Township Committee meeting on September 27, 2022, I had asked, "Who was the attorney who represented the township in the negotiations for the settlement agreement?" And I was told that it was Attorney Eric Bernstein, the Planning Board attorney, but I was told that in the negotiations, he was acting as the, I think it was Affordable Housing Attorney.
Which he has been and remains to this day.
Okay, and so, and so, Mr. Bernstein was involved in the negotiations of the settlement agreement, but now he's also representing his client, the Planning Board, and this settlement agreement obligates the Planning Board. When you read the settlement agreement, it says the Planning Board that there, that there would be consequences if the application isn't approved. So how can you do negotiations on the one hand and then obligate your client on the other hand? And these records should be provided. The settlement agreement should be provided, and also when you have a long span between public hearings, the verbatim transcripts should be provided also on civic clerk so that anyone who wasn't at the meeting would know what it's about, and anyone who was at the meeting and doesn't remember and doesn't know who, you know, what the witnesses said, all of that would be available instead of having to sit for three hours to watch a YouTube video. So I'm putting it at risk as a Hillsborough Township property owner that the verbatim transcripts be provided anytime there had been a prior public hearing to provide it for the next public hearing for that applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meryl Bisberg, 4 Hickory Hill Road. I just have a question about the meeting that's in question, the October 25th Environmental Commission meeting. I saw a notice that came out like a day before that said testimony would be limited and the testimony would be given, or the meeting would be held in the room across the hall. But I understand that this room was empty that night, and it is hard for the EC. They don't have anybody recording, and they have to do minutes, and they don't have a lawyer, and they don't have any, I mean, and there are only four people from the EC that night, and they don't have a stenographer, so, and it's not a video in case they want to do their minutes later. So is there a reason it couldn't have been in here? Because without a microphone, some of the seniors really had trouble hearing. You know, they had to drag in chairs from another place. Why wasn't this room used?
Because traditionally, EC meetings don't really get great turnout, so, and.
Well, that's changed.
Well.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, that's not within the board's purview. I believe that the, that the members of the committee who are here this evening and the interim planning director will address the issue with administration in terms of that issue. This board doesn't schedule where the EC meets, how the EC meets, or conducts its meetings. It's an advisory entity to this board. That's what it is. So while I understand Mr. Julian's comments, this board is not in charge of how and where and when the EC meetings get conducted.
So let me just, as, as representative on Township Committee, for anyone that's ever been to an Environmental Commission, if you, if you've ever had more than 10 people there, it's probably a lot. It's not all the time. I know there are, there are some times where there, but let's just say what transpired on the 25th was unique. So if there was a change in circumstances that warrant a change in the venue and the way we handle those meetings, we will certainly undertake that.
I think it's actually, I mean, I wasn't there, but I think it's wonderful there's this much public interest in what's happening in our township planning, so, and I would do everything that we could not to limit participation. Let's see. Okay, in September, the Planning Board passed a resolution to notify all warehouse applicants that 10 days or two weeks before an applicant's plan is to be heard, they are to send to the Planning Board a full description of their testimony or some kind of memo. I think that came up tonight in the earlier application. Does that apply to the first meeting, and has Weston Road LLC been notified because their, their application's a week from tonight? They're going to first be heard.
Applies to all applications regarding where there's going to be planning testimony.
Do you assume that there's not planning testimony?
I don't assume anything. If there's no, if there's no report 10 days before the meeting, there either won't be planning testimony or it won't be allowed to be heard because part of the resolution says that if you don't submit it within 10 days before, you can't put it on.
So the resolution says that, but I'm asking, how are they notified? How is, yeah.
It's a public notification, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, next week's application is also from the law firm of Savo, Chalk, Corsini, et cetera, so they're well aware of the allegations.
Okay, because I haven't seen correspondence. So one member of the Township Committee has come out with a plan to restrict warehouses. Many of the points in this plan are points that residents have already brought to the Planning Board at, at the time they could have and probably should have been used to turn down or at least challenge an application. Some of them, some of these, like the bike lanes and the sidewalks, which are in this quote-unquote plan, are already inquired in some, are already required in some of the zoning, for instance, T E C D. But when the application was being heard, the applicant declared they weren't doing sidewalks and bike lanes to the public roadway, just like that, and the Planning Board and the professionals didn't flinch. It was the residents who called that out. That is a planning responsibility. On September 22nd, this Planning Board passed a motion for the Township Committee to review the Light Industrial Zone in light of the new state planning warehouse guidelines, which had been discussed previously, going back to at least July when they were first issued. I don't know if it was before that. What about the other zones? What about the fact that there are about 90 parking lot tractor-trailer spaces in the application for Homestead Road LLC, for instance, while the zone says nothing about tractor-trailer parking? How many variances can an applicant get before it's clear the application doesn't fit the zone? How many variances can they just skip even asking for with a wink and a nod of the Planning Board? How does this plan accrue to stopping the five current?
I'm going to stop there. If you want to.
Garbage comments, Meryl, that we talk about. Wink and a nod implies, has implications that make it seem like they're somehow, we're in cahoots or that we're, we're, we're working with them. Those are the kind of comments that just make it seem as though we're somehow doing something nefarious, and I don't know why you continue to go down that path.
Residents had to find, residents are the ones who found this issue about the bike lanes and the, and the sidewalks. That's why I don't know why it's in the township's plan now. It's already in some of these zones. What I'm saying is, this is all zoning's responsibility.
I want to go readdress the wink and a nod, please.
Yeah, please.
Why do I readdress?
No, what does it mean?
It means that, it means that the planner did not require a variance for this.
No, you accused the Planning Board of a wink and a nod, not the planner. Please, please tell me what a wink and a nod from a Planning Board means.
It was never acknowledged. We had to come back in the July meeting and talk about it again.
So why didn't you put it that way, that it wasn't acknowledged, instead of having to go passive-aggressive with a wink and a nod comment? This is the type of reasoning what inflames the general public and what causes these type of, you know, situations, scenarios at meetings. And if there's any limitation to access by, for the public, your words are the ones that are going to cause that. You know, we just went through everything about civility, and you have to be passive-aggressive throwing a little snarky remark like that.
I'm sorry, that's not been civil. I really.
Come on.
I think, I think more importantly was the fact that it seems like the residences are reading these, these zones sometimes more than, well, I don't, I just want to say, and it's, it's what I said, that we were the ones who found this issue.
Ms. Bisberg.
And the lawyer just came in.
Ms. Bisberg, to, to make changes in zoning, and Mr. Coys is here, it is not just look at a zone and change it, because what you change in one zone could trickle down to all the other zones. So it is a, a long process to look at all the zones, which we started in May, to look at all the zones, because what I do in LI would may affect what happens in a distant district by changing it just a single word.
Right.
So therefore, it is not the fact that you brought it to our attention, we are in a study and will continue to a study of all the T E C zones and the LI zones, but it is not something that is done with a wink or nod or even just changing of a, of a word. It takes a long time because we don't want to change one zone which affects 10 other ones in a negative way.
I'm not even talking about changing.
So what I'm, my point is, you asked why we had, we had, have started it. It just wasn't in public, okay? We had looked at these, we've been looking at these for a while. You just weren't aware of it until all of a sudden you brought it up, that you feel. So I appreciate your comment that the, that the public has, has lifted the veil or the cloak on this, and they haven't. We have been looking at this for quite some time. You just haven't seen it because we haven't made, haven't made the action yet because we have to do all our homework before we do that. I don't know if David, you'd like to add to that, but that is essentially the process of what gets done, to educate you so that you understand what's going on.
So in the, in this plan supposedly, there is a statement that, well, there's statements about changing the definition of the warehouse, but I think what people want, and I think this is one of the reasons that there's people here tonight, and maybe one of the reasons there are a lot of people asking, is how is this plan going to accrue to stopping the five current applications?
It can't.
It can't, and we've.
We've said that before. You know that answer.
And actually, I just want to stop all discussion because we have those five active applications, and we shouldn't be discussing anything that could impact those while they're still in process. So please just make a general comment. This is not a Q and A session.
But just, but I want to comment on that, just to be clear, so everyone understands. Once an application is submitted, the, the regulations and the, and the ordinances are what are in place at the time the application is submitted. We've gone through this at multiple hearings. It's not when it gets approved, it's not when it clears all of its third-party agency approvals, it's at the time it gets submitted. That's what we have to go by, and you know that, Meryl.
Which includes water.
We've been over 100 times.
That you've been here for.
I do know that, but there was no information, you know, when this plan came out, that it wasn't going to do anything to really change these five applications. And that's what people wanted to hear.
Mr. Chairman.
By the time you get to these five, I don't think people have to hear about any more warehouse applications for once.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, this is, the state recently, within the last four weeks, issued the guidelines, and I underline the word guidelines for a reason. That's exactly what they are. They're recommendations and suggestions to municipalities for consideration for their zoning going forward. When the issue was raised, when it was brought to the attention of the board, and may have been by me, it was, again, a guideline, and I have said this at multiple meetings from day one. The legislature changed the law a number of years ago from a time-of-decision rule to a time-of-application rule. At the behest of the builders, the legislature basically said, "You can't change the zoning during an application," and they went ahead and did it, and the governor, I believe if my memory serves me correctly, it was Governor Christie who signed it, said, "This is the rule." Therefore, what was in place at the time the application was submitted is what's in place, and no matter what the state promulgates, and before everybody gets all excited about the next thing that the state just promulgated last week for consideration, almost every piece of legislation that ever gets approved by changes is prospective in nature and rarely retrospective in nature. So the changes coming, whether they be the guidelines for warehousing or the inland flooding rules or whatever else, is not going to affect any application currently before this board and potentially any application that comes before this board between now and the ultimate promulgation of whatever that is. So if the public is of a belief that somehow we're going to be able on a dime to change the rules of engagement here, it's not going to happen, and it's been said at every application, whether it was these applications, the affordable housing applications, or any other application that has brought more than Susan Gulliverd out to talk about. So I don't want the public to be left with the belief, and I know this board, and I have said it more than once, more than, more than, a lot more than once, is these applications are going to rise and fall on what's in existence right now. As for what was or was not brought up by the public, these applications are ongoing, and they are reviewed on an ongoing basis, and things are picked up and not picked up by the planning department, the engineer, my office, et cetera. We are always greatly appreciative when the public also brings them up. It doesn't mean that we're not aware of the. mean that we're not aware of them, and it doesn't mean it won't find its way into a discussion of the application if we ultimately approve or disapprove of it. But things can't be looked at in a vacuum. And you can't pick out and say, well, at this hearing, something happened, or at that hearing, something happened. You have to look at all the hearings. They're going to go on a while. You were all here tonight to hear this. These applications are going to go well into 2023, most of them. And we'll see what happens, as to what will ultimately happen. But it's going to depend on what goes before this board, what evidence is provided, what testimony is provided, and what additional items to prove whether or not they're entitled or not entitled to the application.
Okay. Is there any number, is the number of variances or waivers that an applicant asks for just open-ended on its own before someone decides that it doesn't really fit the zone?
It's open-ended. The issue that ultimately gets determined, depending on the number, may be whether or not it belongs before this board or the zoning board. But the municipal land use law does not say, if you ask for more than X number of variances or X number of waivers, you can't apply for an application. There is no limit. What it does potentially impact is which board hears the application.
And Eric, I might add, it doesn't, there's no set number, and we have no authority, Mr. Bernstein has no authority, Mr. Coys or Mr. Kamaski have no authority to deny an application because it has variances in it. That's the process we have to go through. And we've tried to explain that as many times as we can, that the application gets submitted, it'll get heard on its merits. And at the end of the testimony, and when all the, everyone has finished speaking, then we have a decision to make based upon all the testimony, all the variances, everything else that's part of the application. That's how it works. We can't kill it before it gets to us.
Okay. I'm just going to request, based on the applications that are left, many of which have some serious things in them, that you do everything you can to look at all aspects of it, and hear the public, allow them to come in, and, you know, because environmental testimony is very important, and people are starting to realize that, and that's where we're getting more and more people. And do what you can to protect the public.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, because it's another one across the bow, this board will consider everything placed before it, by whoever places it before. However, and we've stated this, and I've been the board attorney, Mr. Hay indicated he was somewhere, I've been the board attorney for more than 20 years, this board attorney. Certain testimony has more weight than others. It doesn't mean it won't be considered. Every application is considered in that manner, whether it's a warehouse application, or an application for a minor subdivision of a residential community. The rules of engagement are no different. They have to ultimately prove the variances, the waivers, the underlying conformance of the zoning, and the board then ultimately determines whether or not it does or doesn't fit the situation. And every application is looked at in its own light. You don't make the proofs, you don't get the approval. You make the proofs, you may still not get the approval, depending on what additional items you haven't crossed. So let us not leave the belief that somehow this board is short-changing situations, is not listening to people's comments, or is making decisions based on items unrelated to what's before it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, yeah, about the warehouse guidelines, based on my estimation, one of the things that I was going to do, at least in our, you know, letters going forward, new applications, was to at least ask applicants, if we don't see any applications, to address certain guidelines, because the guidelines are all bullet points. And if there are certain items, we'll actually ask them to testify in our technical letters. I mean, I think that's one of the resolutions that we've seen in some municipalities, we're trying to push as we have new applications. I think that's beneficial for the public, but I also think it's beneficial for the board, so that it gets to the point, the applicant's able to address it during a technical review, and then also before the board.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to piggyback on what Mr. Hay said, and also to comment on what the mayor had said, you know, it's really important that we have comprehensive approach when we're looking at, looking at warehousing, we're looking at all the different zones. I mean, all you have to do is look at our zoning map and just see all the different types of zones that we have, and all the different types of uses that are permitted. And it's very complex, and it's not something that we could right away quickly fix. It's something where all of these decisions, everything is interconnected. So it's really important that we do that behind the scenes, and to make sure that we're getting the right information together. At the same time, as the planning and zoning departments are working on applications and talking to the applicants, it's also an opportunity for us to talk to them about different things that are out there, like the guidance, and to encourage them to consider doing different things in the applications. And as the professionals that are reviewing these applications, we take great pride in, you know, in being the guard, in terms of looking at all the requirements and the ordinance. Ultimately, when it comes to planning and zoning, we're looking at the general safety, health, and welfare for the community. If you look at the goals and intent of municipal land use law, that's what we're here for. That's part of what we do. And we certainly take a great pride in what we do, and to try to protect the township, and to protect the board. And to piggyback also what Mr. Hay said, when we do work with applicants, we're trying to bring to their attention different situations where, in the end of the day, it could ultimately help the township. And as professionals, people that are licensed, like Mr. Hay, and also like myself, as a professional licensed planner, take great pride in what we do, and what we represent, and the people that we serve. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Hay for saying what he said, and I can't echo enough, in hopes that the public respects the job that we do as professionals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Niati Shah, Free Deer Run. Two questions for you. One, let's say an application is denied, whatever the terminology is, rejected, and they choose to come back. Is that counted as a new application, or is that a continuation of an existing application?
If they just come back, it's a new application. But most likely, they're going to go to court before they come back and submit a new application.
Okay. And then with regards to the zoning discussions that you guys started in May, how can we be part of that?
We'll be part of public hearings. Eventually, they'll be discussed in township committee meetings as we move forward.
Like Wednesday meetings, those other townships?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay. And then if we have an idea for a new zone, how do we bring it up?
A new zone?
A new zone?
Yeah.
I don't think you've ever been in a new zone, but if you have an idea for a pizza zone or something like that, I don't know, but you can always contact our planning department with whatever idea you might have.
Yeah. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joyce Eldridge Howard. I live at 75 Weber Avenue. I'm here because I like to apologize for our community, or the perception that you have about our community. As you know, we're all made up of about ages of 65 or 60, 55 and up, maybe 80, maybe.
Nobody's talking. Nobody's going to give that information.
And most of the residents, really, for them to make that effort to come out that night took a lot. Many of them were afraid. They were scared. And they don't know what's going to happen in the future. So that is what our concern was. But again, we were all upset, but we were, I think, in the most part, quite calm. It was a lot of us, and I know that was a lot. I know it was a lot. But we had no meaning for making a spectacle of any sort. And so again, I apologize.
There's no apology needed. And again, it was, most people were well behaved. I agree with you with that. But when the incident happened with the applicant, and what he said to me, it needed to be addressed. You know, specific, and I agree with you, most people, you know, were well behaved. But the logistics of the room was a concern.
The room was very small.
The room was very small, and again, I mean, we've gone over it, but no need to apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eldridge. Run quick. Too slow.
Too slow.
You're going to slide to the middle.
Good evening. Hear me okay?
Yeah.
Jim Von der Hoorst, I'll spell that, B as in Victor, O as in Nancy, D as in David, E R H O R S T as in Tom. I'm the president of the Hearthstone Hillsborough Homeowners Association, and yes, I was there at that meeting as well. And Joyce is my vice president, and like most vice presidents, she just took most of what I was going to say. So thank you, Joyce. I'd like to just say two things. And one of the things that we have done, or are doing this week, is we're trying to educate our community a little bit more about what is, or what are, the proper procedures in meetings like this. We've got flyers, we've got emails. Some of our folks don't have emails, so we're going to be hand-delivering some information to them. And so hopefully, the next meeting won't be as energized, maybe is the word I could use. But the other point I'd like to make is, and it goes back to the size of the room, there will be a lot of people at the next environmental meeting, because our community is energized around this issue. So if there is any way that we can meet in a larger room, I think that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Right before I ask for an adjournment.
Thanks for the warning.
Susan Gulliver on Club Road. And I was at the environmental commission meeting. A lot of it covered. There's no microphones, no attorney support, no steno, no video. It was overcrowded. Not only was it SRO, people were setting up chairs on the stage behind where they were sitting. One thing you might want to think about is setting up the EC members on the day, up on the stage there, instead of having them down on the floor. That might be helpful. I also know it is hard to judge ahead of time how many people are going to be at a meeting. So I have no idea how you would decide when to change a meeting venue, because I've heard of a lot of them, oh, I'm going to be there, I'm going to be there. And who's there? Me. So that happens a lot.
We did give you the last word, though.
Yeah, you did give me the last word. I was at the last few questions. You had a lot of people there who had never attended a meeting before. They didn't know the process, even though it had been explained to them. But actually, having the process explained, going onto the township website, which I think still has the guide to meetings on it, it's a little hard to find. Maybe that could be moved up a little bit. I mean, short of making a YouTube, I don't know what else to suggest. A lot of the people that were there said, well, I didn't go there to listen to this technical stuff, engineering. I went to protest. So they didn't really understand that the EC was a technical meeting being presented to people who work in a technical field. So it was even more confusing than maybe a meeting like this might have been. And as many times as you can say, what we're doing now is not going to affect the current warehouse applications. This past two weeks, people near 1170 Millstone River Road said, hey, I hear we won. I went swimming, and I had a lifeguard say, I hear 1170 got, can't, isn't going to go. It's out. I was like, no. I get to the end of my lane, and there's people going, Susan, you were at the meeting. I, yeah, that's what happens. I understand that there's no warehouses. Yes, there's warehouses. So Frank, you can say it over and over and over. I don't know what else to suggest. After the meeting the other night, the township committee meeting, everybody heard the studies are coming and all that, and they thought it meant it was a done deal. It's here, we've got it, they passed it. This is it. We don't have to do anything else. So.
Susan, that's fair. I mean, I'm sure people don't know how to, you know, understand what the purpose of the meetings. That shouldn't affect their ability to kind of act like a normal human being at the meetings. Look, I'm one that will come back at you if you say something that I don't think, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to jump off the dais and try to intimidate someone. I think we all know where the fair levels of the quorum are. It sounds like we've made some, we've made some changes, or at least notified people what's expected, and I hope we, I hope we achieve that in the future.
Well, I was lucky, when I was first learning this many years ago, I had Bob Rangelheim to help me along, and the Somerset County Planning Board, which was very helpful when I was first getting into this a long time ago. Now, before we went off on this tangent, I had, we, there was some discussion on Harvard Way this week, people saying, oh, it's denied, it's over. And I don't know what, I know they have a, the resolution has to be passed within a certain period of time. Then the applicant has a certain period of time to appeal the denial. Can you fill us, is it like 45 days, or what is that? I guess that's an Eric question.
The resolution has to be adopted within a period of time, and I will tell you it will be. Once the resolution is adopted and published, the applicant has 45 days to file what is known as complaint and little prerogative writ with the Superior Court of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, I think everything else got covered by the previous speakers. Thank you.
Either one.
Whatever one you feel comfortable with. Yep.
That one gets a little bit closer.
Leisha Gabor-Bayless, 22 Huff Lane in Haltrow. I just was wondering, if applicants include misleading information in their application, do you work to fix that?
What do you mean by misleading?
So I've tried to reach out to some of you, and I've talked with a few of you, oh, two maybe, well, sort of three or four, but not fully. But for the impact statements, the community impact statements, and the fiscal or no, financial impact statements?
If your contention is that their community impact statements are incorrect, I don't know what your background is, but that's up to our professionals to determine if they are or not. And most of them, if, correct me if I'm wrong, are pretty basic, right, out of a program?
Basically, yes. They are, there is a calculation program that's used for them, and, you know, it weighs the community benefit versus the non-benefits that you'll find. So I've done several community impact statements. They are assigned still by professionals, and they're attested to by professionals when you go through technical review.
All right. And so I'm not, I'm not mentioning, like, so when you have a housing development, I'm not mentioning the range of expected school age students. I'm not questioning that. It's just that when you look at one part of their statement, if you search for the word surplus, you will see that they have said, okay, here's how many students we're going to have, we're estimating from this to this. It's a range. That's fine. Here's how much we expect each student to cost, based on the school board's budget. That's fine. You multiply the two, here's how much money we expect these students to cost. You know, that's how much it's going to cost to educate them. And then they say, okay, well, here's how much money we expect to bring from property taxes. And then usually, they're comparing the two, comparing the two. And they said, hey, there's a new surplus, and it sounds great. It sounds wonderful. We even had a reporter copy sections of that into his article, and everyone says, okay, well, we don't want this housing, but hey, it's going to be okay. These students are covered. Unfortunately, that's not how the tax levy works on the school board side. And I've talked to several people, and very few seem to understand how it works. And so I've tried to reach out to people, to have them understand, and just talk to them and see what we can do going forward. So as an example, let's say that the school board brings in $100 million, which is actually very close. very close to how much they do from property taxes. They can go up a 2%, because there's a 2% cap on the budget. So that means that you can have 100, you go up 2%, that's $2 million. Now let's say that we have all these new houses that are going to bring in $3 million.
2% of $1 million is not $2 million.
No, 100 million.
100 million. Sorry. I don't know what I said, but it's 100 million, and you're going up 2%, so that's $2 million. So then you bring in all these houses, that's 3 million that they say they're going to bring in, roughly. So then you think that the normal math, and looking at their statements, would be 100 plus the 2%, plus the 3 million that you're going to bring in from all these new houses. And that would be great, we'd be able to cover these students, it'd be wonderful. We might have to work on where we're going to put them, do we need to build a new school or something of that nature? And unfortunately, we apparently don't have any more fee schedules anymore, as some states still do, right? But we've gotten rid of that pay-to-play, I can understand that, but it's putting us into a tight hole, because instead of 102 plus 2 plus 3 is 105, you're actually, the budget that can only go up to 102. So what happens to that 3 million, right? Right? So that 3 million goes into everyone who is existing, it goes into their pocket. It lowers their taxes by that much money, because they have a larger base to pay the same amount of money. All right? So then, what I've also seen is that, like, our state aid is also getting cut, as you may have heard, it's continuing to get cut, we're going down millions. One 5th grade class has 32 students in it, and I cringe to think about what programming is going to be cut next. And I know that schools are not your issue, but they're really all of our issue, because this is the next generation. And so I just want to brainstorm with you, just think of what we could do. And one thing, is one, fix, have the developers fix their impact statements, so it doesn't say surplus. Just say, "Hey, we're going to bring this money in, it's going to lower everyone's taxes." You know, I think I saw one community impact statement slash FIA that said it correctly. And everybody else, if you search for the word surplus, it's in there, you'll see it.
But I guess I don't understand, and Leisha, we've had this conversation.
So then...
The impact statement indicates that there is amount of tax revenue that's generated by the project, and there's an expected amount of cost associated with the people that will be living in those homes. And the tax coming in versus the cost going out, if it's a positive number, it's essentially a surplus. It may not be in the calculation of how the school has to apply their budget, but that's not what it's intended to do.
So in my example, 100, and then you go up 2%, because you're allowed to go up 2%, if they wanted to max out their budget, get the most money they can possibly get, right? Goes up to 102 from that, then you have 3 coming in from the new houses. Are you saying it would be 105?
No, their budget can't, doesn't only go up $2 million, their tax levy only goes up $2 million.
Right, not their whole budget, sorry, the tax levy, the property tax levy.
Correct. So there's other means of raising money for a budget, not just the tax levy.
There are certain waivers that you could possibly qualify for, a lot of them we have not been eligible for recently. Also, there's enrollment waivers, where you get a slight bump up if you go above a certain rate, and things of that nature, but...
Right, but all I'm trying to say is, your issue is, I think, with the tax, with the school funding formula, and the way the schools get funded, and how...
School funding formula is stated, I'm not worrying about that right now.
As opposed to the impacts, the impact statement, which is simply a mathematical calculation. It's saying, what's expected tax revenue, and what's the expected services costs? That's all that calculation is determining.
And that would be fine, if they take out the correlation between the two. If they just take out the part where it looks like it's going to be a surplus, if they say, "Here's how much more it's going to cost to educate your students, terribly sorry, here's how much money we're bringing in," so everyone else's taxes are going to go down by that much.
So the other side of your...
The correlation is what I want to have fixed in the statements.
The other piece you're missing is that if it today costs $14,000, or I don't know what the number is in Oak Grove.
15, 18.
Per student.
Per student? Every other student does not cost necessarily $14,000. There's some marginal costs at some point that ultimately determines what the incremental cost, true incremental cost is for all of those additional students.
Right.
And it's not $15,000 per.
If students come into our system, we need to, you know, treat them, we need to educate them, you know? So it's just a matter of how do we do it, and it would be nice to have the support. So one idea would be to talk to legislators and say, "Okay, so here's the 2% cap thing. If we have new building, and you could limit it to places that just have homes that have students, or like, not 55 and up, not warehouses, not any other businesses but homes, we expect students to come through. Add that revenue, add that revenue from the property taxes to what the budget can already be." And then, at that point, if the school board only needed to go up 2 million, take the 3 million, or say they wanted to go up 3 million, they can just add that, and then everybody else, instead of having their taxes go up 2%, they could be zero, or they could even be a negative percent that year.
I'm not arguing that...
So I'm just saying, like, if you could change the...
The way the schools need to be funded needs to change. All I'm saying is that I don't, it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with how the income, the impact statements are being calculated.
Do you see there's a surplus on that?
There is a definite problem with the way our schools are funded. I will heartily agree with you.
Do you see how the impact statements say that there's a surplus?
No.
And it seems as though...
No, I just agree.
It says, have you searched for the word surplus in them?
I know, but I may pose a question to Mr. Bernstein, or you want to?
If I may. May I have Lisa's administrative kind of update on this? So Mr. Maskey and myself met with the interim business administrator, Mr. Eckert. He's permanent, thank you. And basically, since the, like, last round of applications that came through with the community impact statements, we had met with him, and part of what he's responsible for is commenting, the Board of Education is commenting on these community impact statements. So we had met with him to discuss that, and he had also shared some of the wording that the developers put in those statements, like you had shared. And we had agreed that going forward, he would be looking at those statements and actually responding back to them. My understanding is, ever since we had our meeting, there hasn't actually been a new community impact statement submitted, so we haven't had the chance to see Mr. Eckert's responses. What we were going to do in the planning and zoning department was to take those, take that response from Mr. Eckert, in terms of him providing clarification or guidance from the Board of Education, in terms of their point of view for, you know, the representation, and try to find a way to communicate to the developers, so that we start getting the community impact statements returned back to us, so that the Board of Ed doesn't have to keep repeating themselves over and over again. So that's one of the administrative things that we put in place, but we haven't been able to implement it, because we haven't had any new community impact statements.
Okay, thank you. So that was part of my question, was the timeline. Would they go back and fix the ones that are already out there that are still pending? Or would you give them comments of, "Hey, could you please update this?"
Mr. Eckert hasn't shared with us that he's commented on any of the existing or standing open community impact statements.
Okay. Would you be able to take my information down? And, because we're basically saying the same thing. I know that I've talked to different people on the township, and one actually said, because I was trying to ask Mr. Bernstein to see what he thought, because I was trying to find, who can I talk to, who can, like, understand this and be able to get back to me? And then when I was asking, like, you know, have you reached out to him, and every, like, two weeks, I'd just say, "Hey, just wondering." And finally, I got a message back saying, you know, "Hey, you should talk to the board, the school board, BA." And like, I already know what it is, and the first person I talked to was him, and I got it in writing, saying that, yes, this is how it works, this is correct. So it was sort of like a circle, and that's why I then included everyone on an email, and I was sort of hoping to be included in the meeting that you would have with the BA, but I'm glad that you did meet with him.
In the last 48 hours, and I received your email, and thank you for sending the email. I have since responded to him, and working on getting basically a joint response on what the policy will be going forward. I have no new information to share, other than we're in communication.
That's great, thank you so much, because this has been going on ever since I saw it in the paper. I'd never known this was in these impact statements until it was in the paper, and I was like, "Wait, that's wrong." And I wrote to the reporter, and he didn't write back right away, and I looked again, and it's like, "Oh, that's a direct quote." So that's where all this has come from, and it's just also to get support for the schools. I know that you guys are township-based, but the schools are important too, it helps our property taxes, it's our next generation, you know, things like that, just to support wherever you can. So if we need to get a referendum, because we have so many new houses, maybe you could also help support that, and just show people, like, "Look, your taxes will stay at 2%. If you get assessed, then all things are off," you know, like, that can be, like, way jumping a high. But otherwise, just to help explain to the public, here's what's going on, because we're building 300 new houses over here or something, you know, the amount of money that we could raise from that is this, and so if you're happy with the school system and the teachers getting a 2% raise, then, you know, let's support this referendum for another $3 million, because we're just getting it from these new houses coming in. So thank you so much for your time. And if you ever want to talk this through more, I can make little diagrams, I could not do that tonight, because I was volunteering over at Eris, delivering Otis stuff, the cold products, we had to make sure everyone got it delivered. Thank goodness, they picked it up, but I was there for like four hours today.
Well, thank you for your volunteer.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we're going to move on. Don't forget to formally close anything, just going to have a reminder to the board members, we do have a meeting next week at 7:30. I'm not sure, do we have anything on a December 1st?
Yes. The return of M&amp;M, and for the record, Mr. Chairman, two items. The so-called verbatim transcripts exist because my office pays for them to exist. So my office orders them, my office pays for them, and that's how they come into existence. So until Mr. Lombardozzi provides and we pay him, they don't become in existence, and that's the way the verbatim transcripts occur. As for Mr. Wolfson's indignation, I believe my recollection was it was caused by me. As for whether or not, I will have a conversation with Mr. Maskey, Mr. Coys, about settlement agreements, but I remind the board and the public that what's on Civic Clerk is what is provided to the board by the applicant, by the public, and by the board's professionals. The agreements for the affordable housing are not necessarily provided by any of those groups. The planning board does have an obligation under the settlement agreements, it is not as clear-cut as it was portrayed to be, the application, as the board is aware, is not what was agreed upon, and a number of other items that we will, I guess, deal with again on December 1st.
Okay.
That's what's coming up on December 1st.
Sounds good, and do we need to cancel the business meeting, or do we want to wait till next week? The November business meeting, I think we...
I don't think so.
Or is that Thanksgiving on? So we don't have one scheduled, good.
We'll all be here for Thanksgiving, right?
Okay, so with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, see everyone next week. Thanks, bye.